All right, we're gonna call the July 7 meeting to order. Mr. Wells said he'll be late, but he should be here a little bit later. Bills and manifests, you've got them, Tim?
Do we need a non-public session to start off with?
No. All right, we'll start off with our opening public comment then.
I think, do you want Joe to do his thing during your superintendent's report?
That's up to him.
Yeah, well, if he wants to, like, if it's gonna require interaction with us, if we have to vote on anything, then that'd be fine. If it's just informational, he just wants to talk to us.
We have to vote on it. We have to vote to accept it.
Okay, so it's a superintendent's report, that's okay. Any other, any members of the public, like, take this time?
I'll speak loudly. I just wanted to remind the board of the upcoming Budget Committee meeting, which isn't on your list of meetings. It's for Wednesday, July 20. And we're gonna need the financial statement that is for the last year, but printed on July 11, which is next Monday, nailed that date. That way, any additional items pertaining to the previous year will be included. And we'd also like a copy of the July 1, 2016 to 17 budget. See what that looks like. Then the rest of the items that we traditionally have on a quarterly meeting.
Anyone else? Take a minute. Any board members like to say anything before we get started?
I would. I would like to just say how discouraging I found the vote at our last meeting, 10-minute meeting, on the $35,000. That vote, or the need for the items in the vote, and I'm not even sure what the items are, I don't think any of us do, certainly did not go through the tech committee. It is not incorporated into our tech plan. Frankly, I would be surprised if the board members even know we had a tech plan. It wasn't part of the 1516 budget, nor, which is where the money came out of, nor was it ever introduced to the Budget Committee. It certainly wasn't brought up when we asked for the money to go into sixth, seventh, fifth, sixth, and seventh, I think it is, whatever the three years for the Go Math. It was never suggested that we needed any more to spend any more money than the cost of the thing. It absolutely violates both policy DJB and DJE. There was a statement made by Dr. Gudomski that we would be all right because the policy stated that if we get two bids. The policy doesn't say that at all. There's nothing in the policy about two bids. The policy is very clear that anything over $5,000 has to go out to bid. This did not. I just find it very discouraging that we would spend money like that. I think it's another sharp stick that we've given those people in town who think we spend far too much money for the product we're getting. And I'm sad to see that that happened. Thank you.
I would like to say thank you to each and every staff member that comes into this school every day, knowing that they don't have the backing of the school, of the town, I'm sorry, the way that they should. Thank you for everything that you do to educate our children every day, and for bringing forward to us these things that you need to help educate our children. Thank you.
Thank you. You good?
Good.
All right. We're gonna close our opening public comment and move on to school board business. First up is the approval of school minutes. Of the minutes, sorry.
Move to approve the minutes of June 16. Second, and I'm gonna abstain.
Oh, that's fine. Any discussion? Staying anywhere, all set? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. We also have minutes for the June 20 public session, the short one.
Motion to approve.
June, put it in here.
Yep. Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
You're gonna abstain.
Motion carries. We don't have any non-public minutes, I don't believe. We're gonna skip over the principal's report, because we weren't gonna make her do it, being here only a week, but it seems she put something together for us, so.
I did, and I can be brief.
Plus the board objects, we can let her have her turn to talk here.
So I just wanted to say, after four days, I'm settling in, happy to be here. I've really enjoyed it, getting to know some people, and have heard a lot about how hard the staff works, and how everybody really works to support each other and do what's best for kids. And then I also heard that the opening for summer programs was the smoothest it's been. Bob Payne has done summer for four or five years, and commented to me today that it was the best opening. You also have a curriculum packet that Donna Turco led some teachers through developing. I'm not intimately familiar with the document, I did read it today, and I have some ideas for what I would propose as next steps, namely, really fleshing out the units of study and incorporating writing. This is really primarily reading-based. And then also, with the caveat that this is not set in stone, this is going to be a living document, as we go through it, we'll wanna see how things work. There's a lot of assessment in here, and we just obviously wanna balance assessment and instruction. And then my final piece is about hiring. We have a lot of positions to fill. Those are in process, those that have closed are in process. Most important for the board's consideration is that we will be interviewing assistant principal candidates next Thursday, between the hours of 8:00 and 3:00, and I would invite a board member to join us if somebody is available. So if you wanna check your calendars and send me an email.
Next Thursday, you said.
Next Thursday, the 14th, between 8:00 and 3:00. We're looking at interviewing five or six candidates, so it will take the majority of the day.
Thank you very much. And welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions from Ms. Jones? All right. Moving on to policies, we have three, well, let's see, one, two, three, four, five policies, which have had their first reading, and I believe we need to just approve them for second reading?
Right.
Well, this is the second reading.
This is the second.
Pardon. So is this the final?
The step if we ratify these?
Yes.
At this point, there, that's, yeah, no.
Okay.
Motion to approve, is that what it is?
Is that what we need?
Ratify, maybe. Is there any discussion on these policies?
I have discussion. I went through, I spent some time, I had some time, went through our policies, and I found 27 policies that we clearly often invite, often don't follow. We just ignore them. So I'm not, when you put up for vote, I'm just gonna abstain. I don't want my name on policies anymore. If we're not gonna follow policies, then I don't want no part of them. You know, it's just, purchasing policy, it doesn't matter. We don't follow them, so why bother? And so I'm just gonna abstain, I'm not gonna bother. Please don't put my name on them.
Take your name off the board totally.
Any other discussion on this? So do we need to... So all in favor of ratifying the policies as written?
I have a question, actually, before. These went to the Policy Committee, I assume?
Yes.
And there were no comments from the committee? These are their recommendations?
They came from the committee, I think, first. They were here three meetings ago, we talked about them, we sent them, had some edits, we sent them back to the committee.
So those edits have been incorporated in the committee?
Yeah.
They have first reading.
Okay.
And then they came back two weeks ago, I believe, and then it had a first reading, we approved them, and so now they're back for the second reading.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just a point of clarification. The names on the policies, it simply lists the school board members, it doesn't list the vote on the policies, so. I understand what Tim is requesting, but this is the entire school board, and then the vote would be reflected in the minutes.
Anything further? All in favor of ratifying the policies as written?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
I'm gonna abstain, so if we do one, motion carries.
And to me, the, clearly, it is that I'm agreeing to the policy when you put my name on there. But I'll check into that.
Mr. Gudomski, superintendent's report.
There was a question, do the names need to be on the policies?
Could it just say the Northwood School Board, you know, 2016?
If the board would like, I can certainly check with Barrett and find out, you know, what needs to be listed on the policies and what is.
Yeah, I would like, I would like decide my name to be abstained if you have to put it.
I can do that. I'll check with Barrett.
Also, the different groups by year that it has on each policy, how far back does that have to go? Because I've seen some policies that have three, or four, or five different school boards signing them. I'm just curious.
I'll check.
Well, it's like each year when we renew it, or not each year, but whenever we look at it.
If it's modified, the date goes on there with the people, or if it's reaffirmed, so it's not every, it's every time the board looks at it. Why is it, why do they have to be there? I don't know, maybe they don't.
I can certainly check.
Thank you.
Under the superintendent's report, we do have two people that are presenting, is it okay if I do those first?
Sure.
I believe Joe Gunter is here, and wanted to speak briefly, so, Joe, it's all yours.
Guys, do you mind if I use that microphone right there?
Go for it.
Anybody mind if I sit down at the table, just for a second? Okay, just a few handouts, ma'am, welcome to the.
Thank you.
There.
Thanks.
This is just an overview, so if you see big numbers, don't panic.
I think so.
Okay, Gary, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, guys, it's actually a pleasure to come here today. A few months ago, the previous select board, which Tim Janber was on, asked, and I know Tim also asked during his time here at this board, asked if I would help out the school and maybe write a grant. It's a pleasure today to come and tell you that the school, Northwood Elementary, was awarded an AmeriCorps grant, which brings 20 tutors, which, in a little handout there, you'll see it, 20 tutors to the town, along with one paid staff to manage those tutors. The way the grant's written, it's for, I called it the BADS program, which I thought was really clever. It's the before, after, and during school program, focused on science and math, which were two of the areas the school was struggling with. But if you read through that very quickly, you'll see that that doesn't preclude having these tutors do other things, so they could also help with reading, or, I don't know, whatever else, social studies. Now, since we've been offered the award, the school board now needs to decide if they want to accept it. In terms of dollars, and I'll send you the budgets and everything, it's about, for the numbers, it's a $10,000 match cash, but that's worst-case scenario. That comes with, that has everything like safety trainings by the fire department and the police department, background checks, trainings for the volunteers and for the staff, and a lot of that is just, if it's not free, it's gonna be nominal. So honestly, I can see really maybe spending out $5,000 of match.
Questions? What's the in-kind match?
Okay, thank you. I was like, maybe I just don't know.
Yeah, what you said, the cash match needed is $10,000, and the in-kind match is $15.
In-kind was, oh, what is in-kind? Oh, in-kind is like, so there's computer stations that the kids, the volunteers will need to use, and then I counted that use of the computer station as an in-kind, so you're actually saying, here's a computer, use it. And I counted that, each station I counted as a $1,000 match. It's not cash out, but since they're using your stuff, you can count that towards.
Almost like they're renting the equipment or something?
Yeah. Or space, there was like $5,000 worth of space that we use for in-kind match.
And that's like standard numbers that you use?
Yeah.
For grants like that.
And again, I'll send the whole package over to you guys, so that way you can review.
So the match was $25,000, in-kind is $15, and the rest is $10? Is that how that works out? About $10?
In-kind was $15, four.
But what was the cash, what was the amount of match we needed in total?
The total, actually, the total, the total match was $42,000, in-kind was $15, and cash, so the way they do their accounting, the cash is 26, but that also rolls into account, what the principal, because we can use the principal, who will kind of oversee the person managing the program. We took a little bit of her money and said, we're gonna have her supervise, so that was a few thousand dollars.
So is this total for the three years, or is this each year?
No, all total for three years, it's $192,000.
That we have to pay?
No, that you'll receive.
How much is over the three years are we paying? Are we paying $10,000 a year, or is the $10,000 over the three years?
That's over, that's $10,000 a year, so $30,000.
So we can't, but we can't say yes to this grant, because then we're putting $10,000 of, wasn't this the whole thing with the retirement? We can't say yes to something that the voters haven't agreed to, like we're spending ahead of ourselves?
Well, number one, didn't, wasn't the $20,000, how much was in our, we had a Warren article for a grant match.
Right. I think it was around $1,000.
That was $20,000, and as far as I remember, that was approved.
Yeah, yep.
So we've got $20,000 in a grant match, and the intent, as far as I'm concerned, was always to go back to the town, especially if we can show it's working, and we were able to get $190-some thousand for the cost of $30,000, and, you know, build that up. But at the same token, we can spend $10,000 out of it now, or whatever we need, and we can actually budget next year as a safety precaution in the budget.
Yeah, and this money, you don't need $30,000 upfront. This is, you roll, every year you come back and say, do we want this grant? So after one, after one school year, you can say, well.
It wasn't what we wanted, or?
Yeah, it wasn't, it's not really working out, we weren't sure what it was gonna be about, but I wouldn't, so this is, I used to work for this organization, and honestly, the first year can be tough, but there are organizations all over the country that, once you get past that hump and you know what's going on, phenomenally effective, remarkably effective.
Can I ask a question? How much time are the tutors here?
So it's 20 tutors, it's, I wanna say, 900 hours during the school year, and you can allocate those hours however the school wants it, however the program wants it. So if you want more hours in the morning, great, afternoon, during school, it's really flexible, it's up to you.
This is up to 20 tutors, I assume, right?
Up to 20 tutors.
Right. Yeah.
What are they expecting for a minimum? I mean, we had talked about this a little bit when we were developing the grant, and sometimes it's difficult to find, I mean, finding 20 tutors is often a major task. So what are they expecting for us to do for a minimum?
Yeah, it sounds great, the 20, it can be hard to find, like you said, 20 tutors. The first year, they'll be very flexible, even if you only got like two, the first year AmeriCorps will be like, oh, well, you're a new program. Year two, they'll expect a higher, a higher rate of retention, so.
And are there specific requirements, what the tutor, who, or what the, the education or something that the tutor has to have?
I think we set that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, most of the time, my experience has been, it's been college kids who come in. When you do this program, AmeriCorps actually fronts, or when you finish the program, AmeriCorps gives them college scholarships, which is a great advantage to get college kids on board. And four of these, four of the tutors are actually, there's a $4,500 stipend that comes along with it. Just, I kind of envisioned them as kind of, yeah, just watching everybody else and making sure content is the way it should be. So you hire, you hire somebody with, from the grant, $30,000 bucks, you got four more tutors that are also paid $4,500 bucks apiece, and you have 16 underneath them, so it's this layered approach to try to get everything.
How much are those 16 paid, then?
They're paid zero.
Oh, they're, okay.
They're getting credit.
Yeah, they get credit, they get college, they get a scholarship.
I got you, okay.
So the $30,000, for all intents and purposes, would be the person to run the entire program for us?
Yes.
Including hiring, or finding?
Yes. They can, that job is to manage the program. You will need a little bit of oversight, and there's money budgeted there for healthcare as well, for that person.
What if, I'm just trying to think of all the scenarios. What is AmeriCorps going to think if we've got a $30,000 staff member that we hire to run the program, and we end up finding three tutors, four tutors? Is that going to be an issue?
Again, they'll look at performance, year one, they'll be very lenient with us. Year two, they'll ask, well, why aren't you getting more people on board?
Right.
It's, yeah, so, they will, year three, if we only have one tutor, they're not gonna be pleased, and they definitely won't even consider re-upping after three years, but I'm not, I don't mean to downplay this, but they're gonna be very flexible with us in the beginning. If we do go to year three and we don't manage to fill all those slots, they probably won't give us another grant.
Right.
I mean, I think this sounds great and everything, but I just, my reservations, and, you know, if you think this is great and you wanna go ahead with it, it's your first year, and then we're gonna throw something like this on top of it, that, I mean, I don't know if you've ever worked with anything like this before, I don't know, you know, it's just one more of those things to have to.
We applied for it in my previous school, and we were not able to do the grant matching. It's definitely, it's more adults, it's more positive role models, it's more supervision, it's more academic support, so I would certainly be in favor of it.
Okay.
How many towns are doing it in New Hampshire, do you know?
I don't know New Hampshire, I don't know how many towns, I think they, this is the first year, Serve New Hampshire, which is the state organization running these programs, this is the first year they've received, all of their programs are funded, and I think they have 10 programs, so, but they also have other, other things going on.
So are they already incorporated, like, with UNH and other universities?
Yeah, these folks, the Serve New Hampshire, they're integrated in pretty much, yeah, the education facilities all over the, all over the state.
So hopefully, it shouldn't be hard to find, that's what I was thinking, I mean, UNH is right down the road, and hopefully it wouldn't be hard to find tutors.
That's what I was hoping to.
Numerous colleges within 20, 30 miles of us, numerous colleges, I mean, this is gonna take some work to do, but I just can't imagine that we can't find people that wanna come to Northwood and tutor for credit and or money, but it's gonna take some work, and I don't think that was ever questioned when we started it, you know? Takes work to educate kids.
Something else that might be a bonus, especially in our town, folks that are, I wanna say, 55 and older, if they wanna come back for just a couple hours to spend some time with the kids, they can give their tuition, their college tuition, scholarship, to their grandchildren, or their children, so it's a big bonus, it's, I mean, really, it's really inclusive for everybody, you know?
So we do, we need to vote to accept it, and then, whatever the money amount is, then we're just going to take it out of the grant?
The grant matching.
This was the whole reason we did that. It was the entire reason we did that Warren article, was for this grant, and we got it.
Sounds great. Thank you, thank you for so much for doing this show.
Yeah, no problem, guys. And I'll send over the packet to?
Dr. Gudomski.
Dr. Gudomski. Thanks, guys.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you for doing all the work behind it, too. So a motion to, I don't even know, is it accept the bid?
Yeah, it would be accept AmeriCorps grant for a period of three years.
Second. Any discussion?
The only discussion I have, I'm really in for this, but it's going to take somebody to take a hold of it, and us to push it, and not just let it, you know, go away, and we shouldn't even start if we're not gonna really do it. I absolutely think it's a doable thing, it's a school board, it's just to sit back and watch and make sure and push and shove, but really, it has to be handled by the administration. It's an opportunity to bring in a bunch of kids and/or older people to help educate our students, and by all means, we need them.
I'd really encourage the board to go to the Serve New Hampshire website and check out the success rate of these programs, just for our information, just to see what it's all about and what these tutors do. I've looked at it, obviously, I helped write the grant, but.
What is it called again?
Serve New Hampshire.
Serve.
A lot of general information on the AmeriCorps website, too, with the more specific
programs, you can go to the Serve New Hampshire.
When we met with Joe last year, quite frankly, I was the devil's advocate with all of these questions about, you know, is it, is it another burden for our building administration? What's the amount of grant match? Can we get the volunteers? And quite frankly, I think the biggest challenge of this is going to get the number of volunteers. We can certainly get some, but, I mean, I think 20 is pretty ambitious. I'm glad to see that there's a position there to manage that, and can do some of the recruiting and the training and the organizing that becomes cumbersome, but Joe did a really nice job at hearing our concerns and moving forward with that, so.
So these tutors, do they have to be 18-plus? Do they be high school kids?
I think ideally, I would like to have, I mean, I, when I look at this situation, I would like to have the training on down. If we can get a retired teacher or somebody like that that's interested in doing some time, I mean, that would be the ideal situation. The next level down would be somebody like a UNH student who's in a teacher training program that wants to get some experience, that'd be wonderful, and then working down our criteria, and we certainly could explore possible juniors and seniors in high school and see if that's something that, that might be acceptable as well.
Because then if they can get scholarship money for doing their volunteer work.
Yeah, that's, that's a win-win, so.
And if we keep their numbers up to 20, that would be even better, but we wanna make sure that they're quality, too.
Yeah, but we really talked about the after-school and before-school tutoring, setting up those types of things, and it is some legwork, it is, you know, a lot of organization, but I think it's certainly worth giving it a run.
Yeah, if it's not all doable, it's, it seems like it'd be a big benefit.
Absolutely.
Kids, for sure. Great. Any other discussion on this? All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, Joe, that's, that's great.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate it.
The next case that I have, I've got Steve here, the board had requested a brief update on the situation of technology in the building, so, Steve, if you could take through that in a few minutes?
Mr. Gunner's example, go ahead and use the seat, if you don't mind.
Mr. Gunnar's example, go ahead and use the seat if you don't mind. I have a few things to hand out, and I'm actually going to be uncharacteristically quick tonight. I was asked to provide some information and then for the board. And then the last meeting that I was at, some questions came up in reference to some stuff that's going on with technology, so I just, I wouldn't think I was actually told to come here tonight, but I knew I was coming tonight, so I'm going to hand out some information. We can talk about a couple of things. I try not to take too much of your time unless, of course, you'd like to keep talking to me. I'll talk technology all day and night. Some of you already know that. I have no problem with that, but I will try to be as brief and succinct as possible with most of my information and question, our answers that do come up. So the first thing I have for you is a quick bullet sheet of things that have happened this year.
Want me to hand that up?
What's that?
You can talk, I'll hand it out.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. So this should make things go really quickly. This actually comes off more of a brag sheet, and I don't mean it to come off that way. It was, it just developed that way. Every time something happens, I wrote it down over the course of the year. So I'll go through them really quickly. There are a couple emphasis areas I would like to touch on, and after that, it's yours to peruse at your leisure. Any questions that do come up after I'm gone for the evening on anything we talk about, if I haven't said it already once, I am willing to talk about technology with anyone, including all board members, anybody in the community. I've done that many times in the past, so any questions that do come up, I am more than willing to discuss them, so. Right off the bat, I tried to go chronologically, but we had a really busy summer last year, put a lot of new equipment in classrooms. Smart boards are in every classroom now. Well, I should say they were until they decided to move a classroom just recently, so now I have to put another one in this summer, but that's okay. One room that was used for something else is now being used as a classroom. So that will change before or be all set by the beginning of the school year. We actually went ahead and gave, well, not gave, but changed over teachers' equipment and actually got them, changed out desktops for laptops last year. And the main reason for that was to basically try to encourage teachers to more engage in the technology and become, take a little more ownership with it overall, so that they needed to take the equipment home and work on stuff at home, or wherever they might be, walking around the building or outside the building. That's actually worked really well. Couple little issues with the stuff on the equipment by certain individuals, and I've tried to fix those, but overall, a really good program that worked really well. We put all of our requests online this year, so any events that came up that needed to be taken care of, instead of, hey, Steve, what are you doing? Can you come fix this? We try to do all that stuff on a tracking basis online. One, a couple of the big things that are on here is testing. Lot of energy went into testing out of my department and implementing that testing. There's a couple of different bullets in this section. I'll just talk about it real briefly. Lot of testing is going online now, and I handle pretty much almost all of them, except for two or three of them. And the two biggest ones are NWEA testing and smarter balance. Smarter balance is mandated by the state, and we choose to do NWEA testing twice a year. We actually changed up how we do testing this year, both with NWEA, which went to an online system, brand new this past year, as well as smarter balance, which is, was always that way anyway. We started that two years ago. We got away from the more structured environment for testing. My goal last year was to take the student and try to make it a very comfortable environment for them to test. Getting them up to go somewhere or interrupt their day to test, based on our schedule of where we could test them, found very disruptive. I could see it because I was usually in there testing them. We started to do more testing in the classroom, or at least based on the teacher's schedule. So what we did this year is we pretty much let all the teachers schedule their own testing, based on their schedule and what they wanted to do. If they wanted to come to the lab, if they wanted to use portables in their classroom, they wanted to, even a couple came to the library, depending on what they had. The upper grades have their own computers, so they were able to dictate their schedule very easily. Based on some of the limited information that had been given, it was successful. I was told scores actually did go up overall for most areas a little bit, and I think that was part of that. I think, in fact, I know it was because I saw it. I'm in the rooms. Not all the rooms now, because a lot of the teachers are doing their own stuff, which I know some teachers are here. I appreciate all your help with that, by the way. They did a lot of the work this year, which is really great. I still was busy doing a lot of it, but I was coordinating and doing a lot of different things. I think it was very successful. Basically, we went from students coming in from recess, trying to get into a lab, start testing, to basically, they're in their class, they finished English or whatever they're working on, the computers come out, they start testing. I thought it was very successful. That's just, that's my feeling behind it. What else? We really started increasing more of Ms. Moore's position as far as facilitating technology. She's our media specialist. She's taken on herself as well as me helping to try and help integrating technology throughout the school. Between her and myself and some help from a couple others, we're able to get into all the classrooms and teach technology in the school, in the classroom, helping the teachers out. I find myself having to help offset that because of her schedule. One person can't do it all, which actually, I know the teachers that really are here that I've been in, I've been in a few, I found real enjoyable. I don't get to sit in front of students and teach that often because of my job, but I really enjoy that. So actually, as long as, as long as Ms. Young is okay with it, I might be up to five or six classes during the week now, but we're going to see if that's going to work out or not. So I've been working with her to go on standards and help out with what's happening in the classroom and keeping an eye on what's going on with the classroom. Other minor stuff, Windows upgrades and so on, we're working on that, doing that in the background. It's trying to keep up with the newer standards. I'm not going to spend too much time on that. Internet safety. I'm going to be real quick on this, even though this is a really big issue for me. Really, it's imperative to educate the children on what's going on with being online and being on the internet. I started a program here this past year myself, doing the younger grades, on a very rudimentary program that I thought went pretty well. It was very well received. I'm going to go ahead and expand on that this year and actually do a little more, what's the word? Make it a little more colorful. It was kind of, like I said, it was rudimentary this first year, but I want to expand on that. And also, on my own time, I'm actually looking at trying to do it for other schools as well. It's a very important program to me. A lot of things happen on the internet, as you know. We don't need to go too deep into it, but there's a lot of issues to be concerned with, so it's real important to me, especially with younger kids. So that was the big one we started this year, and I thought it was pretty successful. Technology standards. I'm going to hand out, actually, and I'll do that now. Talk about it for a second.
I knew you couldn't do it, Steve.
What's that?
I knew you couldn't do it.
Time. Sorry.
10 minutes. I think you've done a great job. It hasn't even been 10 minutes.
You're doing fine.
You're doing great. You're doing great. Thank you.
Okay, I get it to you for you to read. I'm not going to talk a lot about it, except that we really, I might get off, the last thing I was going to talk about is what's going to happen this year coming up. This goes with that. Training is a real important issue as far as technology goes, both for staff and for students. And this here outlines, strictly outlines, what should be happening in each grade. We need that implemented. We've been struggling with that for a little while now. It's in the tech plan. However, I've been working out, trying. It's been delayed because I'm trying to work out how to implement it correctly. Didn't want to put this stuff out there and just have it sit out there and not be used. I don't have any use for useful, I don't have any, I don't have any use for standards that aren't useful or plans that aren't useful. So that outlines per grade what should be happening at that grade level. Now, that still needs to be tweaked because now national standards have changed as of like a week ago. So I gotta, we have to, Ms. Moore's coming in next week. We're going to look at it again, update it, go to the tech committee, so forth. But it needs to be something that gets implemented in the classrooms. I did it last year with my classes that I was doing, and it can be done pretty easily. I just got to get with the staff, train the staff, and make this so that the end of next year, all of our students are ready to go, especially the eighth graders when they go to Co-Brown. So I think with something like this in place, if you look at the very back sheet, there's actually a chart that kind of helps you identify student by name and what standards they are proficient in, not proficient in, and so forth. It is a working document that we're still trying to tweak, and we're hoping to have that done by the time the kids come in. So forgive me for jumping at that like that. And again, there's other things on here. We redid the computer lab and trying to make it so we can have everything on wheels and go on all the different classrooms. I necessarily need a computer lab maybe the next couple of years. Lot of transition in the office I had to help out with, but that's a, that's a staff personal thing. I guess I don't need to get into that, but you can have it anyway. Coordinating for reports and stuff like that. The internet connection, obviously, we improved on. I'm looking to actually quadruple that by the end of next year. I'm looking at getting at least 100 megabyte connection by the end of June, without any cost increase.
Upstream?
No, downstream, downstream. Upstream should be about half of that. Upstream, we don't really need so much anyway.
I meant uplink. Is the, you're upgrading the uplink?
Yes, yes, yes. 25 was great, but we're going to start having issues with everything being online anyway. It's going to, within a few months, two, three months, it's going to become like, it's going to look like we had when we had 10 megabits, so it's just the way it goes. Other influx of computer equipment, like I said, is on there. Chromebooks, netbooks, so forth, and all the different grades. Basically, what I'm looking at for this coming year, coming up, looking for opportunities for staff to, for training. Training, training, training. Training is a big thing for this coming year. In fact, I'm just going to here tell you, I'm going to hand out one, two little pages, and I'm done.
A simple graph, a page, looking at it, for the new tech plan? You know, I'm going over it, though, Dave.
You're doing great. Thank you.
Okay. Technology. The three things that you need for technology to work correctly in a business or in a school, those three things. It's a pyramid. It's hardware, software, and training. If you're missing one of those, it's not going to work. In a school, in my opinion, the biggest thing, well, the two things that you got to worry about so much is hardware, because you're always going to pay for new stuff, and it's always an issue. And training. Training is the biggest problem that any organization has with technology when they get new stuff in. The biggest thing that you hear all the time when new technology comes in is, oh, yeah, go ahead and play with it for a while, you'll learn it fine. Happens everywhere. We can't afford to do that anymore. So we got to get training, efficient training in front of the staff and for the students for those standards I just passed out. Now, based on things that have happened over the last couple of years, we've got equipment in, a lot of equipment in, software stayed right where it's supposed to be. We've gotten a lot of hardware in this building. In fact, just recently. We're pretty much in a position to start using it, we need to start using it effectively. So training is going to be my focus for this whole year. I've already started it, and basically where it's going, we've messed with a lot of different equations. I'm not going to spend any more time on it, but basically, it's going to, most of it's going to end up being online. Time is the biggest concern we have, especially with staff, is how much time they have to do their job and do more things or new things. And if I can make it available to them in an avenue that they can get on their own time or during area, time that's more convenient for them, that's great. Same with students. I actually, I just uploaded a video today, a training video today on our new website for students. When they, when they get to a point where they don't know how to do something rudimentary, they can refer back to training that's already online on our website. So it's a big thing. I'm actually very excited about it. I'm very optimistic. This is like the first year in three or four years that I haven't had something hanging over me. It seems like it was, I'm just, this is going to be a good thing. I'm really actually looking forward to it. People have stepped forward and people have done things to try to help out technology in this building, and one thing I can do hopefully is provide means to get them so they're comfortable using the equipment, teaching them effectively, putting new stuff out there for students, students learning more efficiently, and like I said, get them, when they leave this building, that they can compete with other people when they go for those jobs seven, eight years down the road. So, yeah, I'll just leave it at that because I think I've already gone too much. I just want to let you guys know that up until this point, we've been trying to get things going so that to benefit our students and staff, and now from this point further, we have to get in front of them to show them how to do it. That's kind of where I'm going for.
So I just wanted to clarify, Steve. I was actually the one that asked for the technology update, and it had nothing to do with questioning what you were doing in the school, which I think it's great that you gave us this update. My question is more about how do you see the netbooks or the Chromebooks or whatever being used in the classrooms versus them being put in the kids' bags and just being, you know, hauled back and forth between the school and home? Are they being used the way that we thought they would be used in the classrooms for the things that we thought they would be used for?
It's all over the spectrum, pretty much, depending on classes that you're involved in, what grade you're at. Really, we're dealing with, well, for taking them home, you're only dealing with seventh and eighth graders. Some teachers, well, I don't want to say teachers, but just whatever. Some get used, some do homework with them at home, and they bring them back the next day, and they're doing stuff the next day. Some aren't using them as much as the others. Some, there's equipment limitations that go with them, especially since that was our first big purchase for netbooks for students that they got taken home. Battery life was the first one. They use them during the day. What class are they using them in? So we actually bought more adapters, tried to spread them out during, in the classroom and have them use it. Students that leave them places and don't go get them again. They don't have them. They tell the teacher they don't have them. Why don't they have them? I don't know where it is. It's somewhere else in the building, whatever. Lockers, they put them in their locker. That's all kinds of other student issues that are involved as well. But the, I hate to beat a dead horse, but a lot of it is training, again. Does staff know how to effectively use them? The goal of the first year was just to get them in front of the students and basically, almost see what happens, but constructively see what happens and provide guidance for that. The second year, our usage increased, and quite honestly, I wish I had done more training stuff in this current year that we just finished, or the year that we just finished. But we're going to stagnate from this point on unless we do, again, training. That's what it comes by. But yes, to answer your question, we're getting out of it what we thought we were going to get out of it. Not as much as maybe as we wanted, but we can fix that. And as far as the lower grades, the ones that don't take them out of the, out of the building, they are going to use them for the software that they're using, for all the different pieces of curriculum they're on. They're going to use them as a tool, research purposes, writing, things like that. And for the, and for the software that we purchased for them, so.
And do the teachers come to you if they have certain software or something that they've seen and they want to put that into the budget or something like that? I mean, I've heard of some great programs or, I'm not tech savvy at all.
They go through the tech committee.
They do it through the tech committee because there's some things that I've heard, and I'm just wondering if some of these things have been purchased and not, I don't need to know them personally or whatever, but, you know, these aids to help the teachers in the classrooms, you know, if they bring things forward, for the most part, are they getting the tools that they're, that they're searching out and that they're finding? Are they getting those tools to be able to use them in the classroom to help them teach?
Again, another training issue. However, overall, yes. We have a procedure in place for when software gets recommended. Like Mr. Gugan just said, you bring them to the tech committee, which happens every year. A big one that happened this year was BrainPop. We didn't have BrainPop before this past year. It came up to the tech committee, it came out of the Chris McCollough conference, I guess. And we brought it to the committee, we talked about it, looked at surveyed staff, see how it was going to be used in the classrooms, and we decided to purchase it. The year before that, we did the same thing with Type2Learn. Type2Learn, a typing program. We don't know, no longer have a tech teacher anymore, so typing was going, was going down. We've tried to figure out a way to get that program running so that they could use it in the classroom. Mixed results on that, but actually, I'm working on an upgrade for that. It's going to really help that out a lot. But we did the same thing with that. Had to analyze everything. We had four, three or four different vendors we were looking at, and we chose one and went with it. And so, yeah, we do, but it could be, it could be better. It definitely could be better. We have money set aside in the budget every year for that. So when somebody comes up, we hopefully have something, and then we work it out. The tech committee, the tech committee controls that line number, or as far as that item of the line number.
And the teachers are aware of how to get the money or everything? They are aware of how to do that?
Well, the only thing the teachers have to do is what they already do. They, if they either find something, something's referred to them, something comes across their interest or whatever, usually what they do, actually what they always do, they come to me first. I don't know if you've ever been in the building much, but I'm in, I'm all over the building, so.
But then you bring it to the tech committee?
I usually bring it to the, I think Melissa brought one, Ms. Moore brought one one time, but usually that's the way it goes, because again, I'm kind of like the liaison for that.
Okay.
I'm the face behind it.
I just want to make sure that they know that how to, you know.
Do all of them know? Maybe that some of the new ones last year might not have. I think we brought it up.
Something like one of the first couple of staff meetings, it can just be brought up, you know?
Good point, yes. Yeah.
Just so that, you know, that they're aware that it's there and that, you know?
We should do that, yes.
And thank you for all that you've done.
Oh, sure. No, no problem.
So I know I saw the updated version of the tech plan.
Yes.
But I'm looking online. I see the old, only the old ones on there. Can we get, can you email maybe a copy to the school board members of the updated tech plan?
Actually, I'll give you, it's been delayed for some reasons as far as implementing a successful plan, which I wasn't happy with, and I wanted to make sure everything was a certain way before I went forward. The new plan has a lot of changes, and a lot of them are on the training side. And I already gave a copy to Ms. Young, so she already had that burden right off the bat. I gave that to her. It is ready to go, and I gave it to her to look at so I can, it has to go to the principal first. At least that's what's always happened before.
I'd just love to, love to see that. Once it's approved or posted online to let us know where it is.
The plan is to meet next week unless something develops. The plan is to meet next week, unless something develops further, and, because I know we're supposed to give documentation to the board at least a week prior. So if you have a meeting in two weeks, I'd like to get it there sooner. I mean, at that point, unless, again, unless there's something that needs to be changed, looked at, I, I'm, I don't want to plan, I've been doing these for a long time, and my, my feelings behind plans are, a lot of times, they get developed, put in, and you don't look at them again. I'm really focused on the training aspect this time, that's a big piece of the plan. Out of the five goals that are in the plan, two of, three of them are training. So it's real important to me. So I want to make sure it's right. It has been delayed, I do apologize for that. The state already knows, I've been in discussions with the state, I took all responsibility for that. And they told me just to go ahead and process it through, and when it's done, give it to them.
Alright, thanks.
The 40 megabytes to the 100, is that a cost issue or a time issue? For the uplink?
Oh, yeah, I mean, the amount of, I mean, our bandwidth, basically. Our bandwidth is how much space we have, how much, like, how many people can stream a movie at the same time, let's say, or whatever.
Because you are going to get additional notebook. It's money.
It's money. I don't have a budget to go above 25 right now. Unless I, and we're in a contract, we're in a locked-in contract right now for one more year with our current provider. So once that's finished, I can do other things, which I'm ready to do.
You can't break that contract?
I've never looked at breaking a contract ethically. I've just never done that.
Is it through MetroCast?
Nope. It's through Bayring.
Bayring.
We have fiber coming in the building, and we go through Bayring for that.
Because we, that's a station upgraded.
Yeah.
And we didn't have to break the contract, we just.
You weren't in a contract, or?
No, well, well, we're part of the contract, we just asked to upgrade.
For what company?
Through Bayring.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. The best I could do, I was told by them that we're locked into a contract, so I can see what our penalty is for that, but last, I, information I had is, we were locked in for one more year on that. And, and really, it's not like we're having trouble, it's just I'm looking to try to make it better.
I see coming this next year, you're going to have a big issue with bandwidth.
Yep, we're going to, we're going to jam it up pretty good. But it's a good point, I mean, I can always find out if it's, you know, what the penalty might be. Because I, there is an organization in the state that will help me get better bandwidth, that just started up a few months ago. I don't have the name, sorry. But they're, they work for the state, or they're contracted from the state. And I just had communication with one of the, one of the individuals, and they said, basically, whenever I'm ready, just call them up, and they'll take care of it. So I'm looking, that's, I'm looking at about 100. That's what I should be getting for what I'm paying, like, competitively.
Can you just do a cost analysis of finding out, like, if you did break the contract?
Yep.
Or something?
I'll make sure we forget that.
What's that like? You said it's not in the budget anyway?
It's in the budget for what I have. And plus, we're on a default budget now, anyway.
Right, so it hasn't changed, right?
I'm locked in pretty much on that.
Unless you took the money from some other tech line or something.
Right, yeah. But the, the, the wheels are in motion to, if, worst-case scenario, within less, less than a year, where you should be at, like I said, four times is better. So, for at least that same money or less.
If you could just could, just run the numbers.
Yeah, sure, I can do that.
Thanks.
I don't.
I'd like to know about the, the new technology plan, so, and I did this last week, pull out the old technology plan, I think it's like four inches thick, the binder that it's in.
Okay.
How are you getting to the new technology plan? I mean, my recollection, when we did the original technology plan, the board had a lot of input, the administration had input, and certainly you had input.
Okay.
So who's doing it this time? Just you, or?
No, it's been done the same way every time. It goes, it gets developed through the technology committee, then it goes in front of the administration, and then it goes to the board for review. And then, any discussions that might come up from the board, that, that's happened before in the past.
When was the last one?
Three years ago. So it's overdue, actually. And like I said, I've already communicated with the state on that. Isn't that, the deviation is more in the training side of it, I'll.
Isn't that the only technology plan we've ever had?
No.
I mean, so you, so you say something, there was one before I got on the board?
There's been one every, every three, four years, depending on what's happening in the building or whatever. I think we're averaging about four years now, because the one before last, we had a, we had the big change with the computer teacher leaving, so they gave us an extra year. So it was four years on that one.
The, the subject, technology, and you've already alluded to the fact that it changes dramatically day by day, why wouldn't we be updating the technology plan yearly, if not even more?
Don't even get me started.
To be honest with you, at this point, I have no clue what our technology plan is.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we have a plan, to be honest with you. The old one is two years old.
Two years old, yep.
You know, as I could see, done three years ago, is at least two years old. You know, and we haven't updated it, we haven't cut out or anything.
Yeah, I just said why we didn't update it, yeah. So the new one is basically a lot of the same, you're always trying to educate the kids, you're always trying to increase technology usage, you're trying to increase skills. The big change from this year, this one and the last one, again, is training is three out of the five new goals. I know one of the goals is on, the same as it was the last term, was grants. Grants are always an issue. And we're trying to.
That's fine. I, I, I'm sure you understand that. I appreciate the training is very important. You couldn't train me to, to run a computer.
Yes, I could, yes.
I'm, I'm beyond that. My concern is, you know, the money we're spending, where we're spending it, why, what do we need in the future, what is our plans, et cetera.
Sure.
And, and that's a discussion that has just gone by the wayside in, in, you know, the last year, year and a half, it's not been much discussion since that big purchase. And now, all of a sudden, we're looking at purchasing more.
Well, it's two.
I don't, I don't see a plan for that.
A plan. A plan, well, each technology plan, the last two at least, I know this for a fact, is trying to get as close as we can get to a one-to-one computer device ratio per student. That's been in every plan.
And that's fine.
So buying, buying a computer.
In what direction? How much is that a year, et cetera? What is the plan? Is there, is there a plan?
For spending?
CIP, capital improvement plan, anything, you know, anything to say, what are we going to need in the next few years? As you know, I look at budgets, I like to look at budgets.
Sure.
I just, I enjoy looking at budgets, and, and I would like to be able to.
Sure.
Plan. I don't like being thrown monkey wrenches in, in not having a plan, and then just someone just throws this in the air, throws it in there. Drives me crazy.
Sure.
You know, I'd, I'd like to see what, personally, as a school board member, I'd like to know, a two or three-year plan, what would we like to be in three years?
As far as equipment goes.
As far as everything's concerned, yes, but certainly equipment. To get there, you need the equipment.
Right, and it's part of the plan, it's in the, it's in there, if you've looked at it.
I distinctly remember, and I, I thought about this gentleman at least a dozen times in the last two weeks, because, because this has really irritated me. And this gentleman wrote us a letter, the school board, and, and I was the only one, I went out and I asked, I spoke to this man, I went to his home in town, because he was so concerned that the money that we were spending, and at that time, it was a hundred-some-thousand dollars, would, would A, go wasted, and B, be misused.
Okay.
And, you know, and, and we, we should know optimally what we, where we want to be a year from today, two years from today, and I think maybe even three, although in technology, that's probably really pushing the envelope, and I, and I do understand that as, as it grows. But how in the world can we plan if we don't have a plan?
Well, isn't that why we're doing the CIP?
I'm saying.
You had said he had to be part of it.
Well, the CIP is going to, is, is, is part of it, but, I mean, we've let the.
It should be a technology plan.
Wane away.
I think I was trying to get as, two years, what's not going to be, what's going to be obsolete, and what's going to, what do we need?
If, that's in there as well, well, vaguely it is, because it, it just basically, after a certain amount of time, you have to rotate equipment. So, yes, there is, if you have 100 computers, we have to forecast for that, so you have to replace those. Increasing, I'll give you that, I mean, if you're, you're saying it should be in the plan, how many I'm going to increase every year, sure, I can understand what you're saying on that one, and maybe that should be.
A, a rough number. I mean, when we did the origin, you're saying it was a previous plan, I'm not aware of that. So I'm not arguing with you, I'm just not aware of it. When the plan that I am aware of was done, we didn't even know it wasn't even on the agenda, smarter balance.
Sure.
So we didn't know that we would need.
Right.
A whole bunch of computers to really do well in smarter balance. So I understand that technology is moving faster than our brains can, almost. But we still could certainly have a plan of, of, of what we have, and, and I honestly would like to know, again, what we have.
Okay.
In, in-house.
Yep, sure.
There was a, a mention recently, where one school had a computer for every five kids, and frankly, I think we're at or past that.
You're, you're way past that, yeah.
Yeah, way past that, exactly. You know, and, and, you know.
Just recently, just on the last purchase.
It, it, it made me feel like we've not supported technology in this, in this school, and I, I just disagree with that.
No, we, we.
We, we, we have, and, and I hope continue, in a collective sensible way, so that we, we can plan, budget for it, et cetera. You know, and, you know, I just hope that that's part of your plan, as to what do we have each year, what's going to go out, what's going to come in. And yes, Barbara's right, that there is a tech, there is a CIP that we're talking about, but we don't have that yet. And we do have technology, and we need to know what, where, why, when, and how that's going to be developed in the next one, two, or three years. And each year, we need to go another year out. As we give a year, we've got to do another year.
Right. Well, I, as far, I will get into the whole, how long a tech plan should be done, I'm right with you on that one, I think a three-year tech plan is almost ridiculous. I think you should have a far-out plan, but your specifics should be very short. I, or at least updated every year. I've actually brought that to my last school, the school I used to work for, and that was how long ago? Over 10 years ago. That you shouldn't have tech plans that long back then.
Well, I don't want a 10-year, but I certainly want an idea of, of what you need for the next one, two, or three years.
Yes, yeah. And then, and, and as far as the equipment, how, what the plan would be to purchase equipment, let's say, or increase technology per year, I'll agree with you on that, maybe, you know, that should be addressed. I, I have vaguely done it, it basically says, you're supposed to try to get as close to the state, this takes, you want to get as close as you can to a one-to-one ratio for students. So every year that goes by, you're supposed to come up with a way to increase that, and I do that in the budget, I present it.
Be in the plan.
Then, right.
I'm not arguing with any of that.
I'll agree with you on that, yes.
Needs to be.
I'll agree with you on that.
Spelled out, not only for just me, not only for this board, but for the budget committee as they deliberate each year, and for the town taxpayers, as they consider where we're going and what we're doing.
Like I said, I'll agree with that, I've probably gotten away specifically from that over the last 10 years, because of budget processes, and how, what we can do, what's going to get approved, like, what happens this year with a default budget? Now what do I have to do next year? It's going to change. So if I have to do it every year, I guess I could go back to doing that again. But there, I don't want to make you think there's no plan for increasing or bringing more technology to build, and there is.
I'm sure you have a plan, Steve.
Right, that's, yes.
That's, that's, that's your plan.
Okay.
I'd like to know what it is, on paper.
Gotcha.
Is that something that could be included in the tech plan that you're revising?
I would, it would have to be an addendum every year, something like that, which I've done before as well.
We should update our technology plan.
I can start doing that again, actually. I, I agree with your point on that, I will, I'm right with you on that one.
So you've had a couple of different things at work all at once here, because the state of New Hampshire requires a tech plan to be submitted for three years, but they understand that the first year is probably going to be very accurate, the second year not so much, and by the time you get to the third year, you're ready to write your next plan, and, and things are changing. That, that's what needs to be submitted to the state.
Right.
Separate from that, I agree that an individual modified plan needs to be done each year for the school board, and for any purchasing and moving forward.
I'd agree with that.
So you've got two different things working all at once. You've got your three-year plan that needs to be submitted to the state, and then, as you go through those three years, you're going to be tightening it up and making it more specific as you go.
I think it's going to be a lot easier now that we have K-8 reading the math.
It's, so.
That's going to be a lot easier to figure out what we need for technology for the upcoming years anyways.
No, okay. Yeah, I can definitely work on that part, easily. Just been something that's kind of, for different reasons, hasn't happened, specifically in a plan by line, I used to have them by line number, years ago, I used to, we're going to buy this, we're going to buy this, and then what would happen is a default budget would kick in, or something else would change, and then now what do I do? And I guess that's part of the issue, and I'll take responsibility for that part of it.
If it's, if it's outside the one that we've submitted to the state, it's something
If it's outside the one that we have submitted to the state, it's something that could be a living document, you could change, you know, update as we go.
Term I've used before, living document. It should be. In three years, that is hard to do. But like Dr. Gudowski said, maybe we should do it the other, the other way.
You've got a three-year plan and revise it every year if you have to.
We can definitely do that.
That'd be great, Steve.
Okay.
The tech committee could work on as well.
Anything I didn't cover? I know I spend a lot of time with you guys. I appreciate your time. I didn't mean to talk too much. If you have anything else for me, obviously, and you can ask me offline anytime you want, anyway.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
No problem, thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
All right.
Can you go into the personnel report?
Yeah, back to my report. On page 25, you'll see the personnel report in your packet. We've got two resignations, Emily Oxnard and Megan Mantel.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Emily Oxnard and Megan Mantel.
Thanks.
Yeah, big time.
Second. Any discussion on these?
Do either one of these have a contract with us this year?
They hadn't signed.
They hadn't signed yet.
What?
They hadn't signed.
He's lying.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Who carries?
The next is a nomination of Mike Breger as athletic director for the 16th, 17th school year.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on this? Mike's been our athletic director for what, two, three years now?
Two years.
This will be...
This will be a second.
This will be a second.
I think he took over them.
Yep.
Yeah, so two and a quarter or something like that.
Absent. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I handed you out one other personnel, Sandra Hassett, for next tutor for the summer.
That's informational, so we don't have to do anything, right?
Um...
Didn't that say informational?
It does say informational.
Okay.
The other piece I have on page 29, you've got your draft for the bus routes.
Motion to accept the bus routes as presented by Ms. Alessandro.
Well, I think these are going to, these are going to change, right? Is this more informational as well? Because we don't have our list of students where they're all going to be...
Well, she...
Yeah, I think...
Sounded like she wanted us to accept them.
Yeah, I think what you should do is, is a motion to accept, and then as the changes are made, we'll bring them back.
Okay, that's fine.
The letter she sent, whatever, that's what it says.
Yeah, it's on page 29.
So motion, well, my motion still stands.
Yep.
Somebody wants to second it.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Do we have, well, probably doesn't have much to do with this. Do we have a number on kindergarten yet?
I'd have to check, yeah. I don't have it off the top of my head, no.
I guess, can I change my motion to accept the draft copies? Put it that way, because it's not a final. Well, you'll second the change to draft copy.
Motion to approve, subject to change.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. On page 42, at the last meeting, we brought you a request for principal mentor throughout the year to assist our incoming principal. And you'll find additional information on the person that's doing it, as well as some of the background on that. Be happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Looked like she's got some really good experience.
I've worked with Pamela Clark before. She does a wonderful job. She's got a wealth of experience. It would be, it would be not only a good sounding board, but also a wonderful mentor and support for our new principal.
Remind me of the timing of this mentoring?
The mentoring actually would, would start virtually immediately. And the, the proposal that we have here starts in July and August, one session a month, September through June, two sessions a month, total of 20 sessions. And it provides virtually any support in between as well, so. So we went, we went through as we presented last time, and we do have money to pay for this. We've got some money in, in the principal lines of salary, health insurance, dental insurance, retirement, which would cover it.
What was the difference between the NSBA one?
Last year, we had the, actually, just the NHASP, the New Hampshire Association of School Principals.
Okay.
And we found that one to be lacking in depth. I think the frequency wasn't necessarily there, and the availability was not what we would hope.
Move to accept.
So you, you need approval to move the money from the other lines to this, or?
Just approval to, to do this program as the mentor program. It's going to be $7,260, and we've got the money already in the principal lines that we can utilize. So just to approve the mentoring would be sufficient.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
I'm opposed.
Carrie, what one?
The other piece I have is the food service contract that I had emailed to everybody. That contract needs to go to the state for approval. Before I sent it to the state, I wanted the school board to see that. I gave each of you a hard copy of that tonight, in addition to the email that I sent out the other day. So if you have any questions, concerns, and if you're all set with it, I will send that along to the state for...
Does anybody have any comments on this? I looked through it briefly and didn't see anything terrible.
Looked pretty standard to me. Of course, I don't know many.
But the only, remember, the only part, I'll find where it was, that I was, had any question about was, there's something about the contractor should not, will not be, will not provide free lunches to anybody. You know what I'm talking about?
No, it said that they will.
But, but we have to pay for them, is that? I just want to make sure that that's the plan. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to...
I believe that's what it said.
I just wanted to clarify for my own, myself, make sure that was the case.
I think I saw that part, but I thought it said that...
So I should have highlighted where it was, but...
Shoot, yeah, it's not us.
The 2.04, as prescribed by client, contractor shall serve free reduced prices and full prices reimbursable meals to all eligible students in a nondiscriminatory, discriminatory and confidential manner.
So I'll look into it offline, it's fine. Yeah, that was it. Yes, 9.09, 9.09. People want to take a look at that. So, no page numbers. Contractor shall not provide free meals or food during the course of this agreement to any person that does not qualify for the free and reduced lunch program. And it says meal costs not associated with NSLP, where the food service operation for students will be charged to the general fund account. So I took that to mean that if you choose to give, you know, do the sun butter and jelly sandwiches for the kids still.
We would be charged.
We would be charged for that. We would just be paying that ourselves. They're not going to be paying that.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I'm fine with that.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments on this? Absolute objection, send it off to the state.
Okay, we'll send that along. And that's all I have under my report.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay. Any committee reports? Any committees have any meetings in the interim from last two?
No, I do, nah, it's something I'll bring up with Ms. Young and Tom.
Okay, I'm good.
We met last week, and we reviewed, I can't remember, three or four policies that we'll bring the next time. And I actually contacted Scott about, talking to Barrett about, do we continue, yeah, do we continue with it? And he had left a message and had not heard back from Barrett yet.
Okay, so we'll follow up with that.
The one policy that I asked to wait until we start school on is the Narcan policy, because I feel like Ms. Benham should be part of that policy, and that we should review that with her, because she'll have to do any education on it or whatever. So I did ask Mr. Rooning if we could wait and do that one after. And I just want for myself the clarification, being on the committee, when we meet, the expectation is that what we bring to the board is what we are asking the board to accept, correct? So if, if the state's policy is this, and we, we want that as our policy, it should be written as our policy in the italic or bold or whatever it is, however they do it, and that's what's to be presented.
Oh, my understanding.
Okay, that's my understanding, too, and I just wanted to make sure that, that I was, I was, and, and that's how it should be presented, okay.
Yeah, what we've tried to do in the past with, with policies is take the existing policy, and any recommended changes by the policy committee, deleted language will be strike through so you can see it, new language will be italicized so you can, and bolded so you can tell the difference, seeing the entire policy in front of you.
Okay.
And then once it goes through first and second reading, and we've made the edits that the school board's comfortable with, all of that stuff goes away and you've just got a regular.
There was just some confusion in it, so I wanted to make sure that, because that's how I understood it. So if it's a brand-new policy that, that they had just, like, the state just came up with or whatever, and we're presenting it because we do not have that policy.
That's a brand-new.
Then it's a brand-new policy.
It just comes as a recommended policy.
So, like, one of the policies, do, if there were parts of it that we wanted to take out, do we just strike those out, or do we just leave them out from the get-go? If it's a new policy?
Because it's a brand-new policy.
If it's a brand-new policy, I would say take it out originally.
Okay, all right.
Maybe give us, I mean, this happened last time, do give us a copy of the recommended policy, and then you can point out the differences and why they're taken out. It would be useful, but...
I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm doing it the right way and that I'm understanding it, going through this.
Okay, thanks. The Education Committee did meet. We've been interviewing at Co-Brown for a few new positions, art teacher, language teacher, and a few student disciplinary hearings. None in Northwood, luckily, so that's good. Any other committees?
Oh, question of clarification, actually. As Ginger noted, the Budget Committee is going to meet on the 20th. So before that meeting, the last meeting or two meetings ago, we got clarification, if you want to call it that, from Barrett about the $1 on a line item question. Got the email. I don't think you were actually here, because Scott was explaining it to us, but we all read that email and came away none the wiser with regard to that question. So I was wondering if you could help clarify his response for us before I go back to the Budget Committee, because that was actually one of the biggest points of discussion during my meeting with them last time. So I know that's one of the questions that is on Marjorie's list to answer.
Yeah, we've got a number of questions from the Budget Committee that Marjorie was, was finalizing today.
Right.
We're planning on, on, on printing out on the 11th, the financials, sending those out. We'll have all of those in the mail. As far as the $1, we, we've asked our legal counsel, we've asked ERA, and the answer that we've got is there needs to be some money in the function code. Not necessarily the individual line, but there needs to be something in the function code.
Correct.
That was my reading of the lawyer's letter, too. I read the Barrett's letter again. It does, it does make sense if you read it like three or four times and get down to it, I think. I think they could say something like that.
So is the function code the line? Is that, like, is that dollar, so?
It's, the function code is what is in the, in the RSA, not the RSA.
If, if you look on, I don't have my budget in front of me, but if you look on your budget, you've got regular education, you've got principals' account, you've got the school board account. Those are the function codes.
Okay.
The lines under those function codes, that, that's, you don't have to have an individual line there. You have to have money in the function code.
So if the line only had a dollar in it, you can take that line out, but can you add it back in if you, you find a reason to have it? That's the thing, too.
Well, the question was...
As long as there's money in the function code.
Right. The, the question was if the line had zero, can you put stuff in there? That was the question. And as long as there's money in the function code, it sounds like you could.
Okay.
Now, having said that, it certainly is a lot cleaner and a lot easier to understand when you have a line available in your budget that you can overexpend. I think there's a certain amount of confusion there, that when you don't have a line in your budget, and you're moving money within the function code and overexpending a line that may not have been identified, then you're creating some confusion. So it certainly is good practice to have an open line under the function code that you're moving money into instead of creating a line.
So that was your...
Just to make it cleaner and understandable. Isn't the reason for not having money in a line so that after a certain amount of years with no money in that line, that line can go away? Correct. Okay, and, and so...
I mean, to me, the board, I don't think we have an answer yet. So, that's just me. I really don't think we have a clear, concise answer. I think you need to go to the Department of Revenue and query them. That's what I think. But, so we did have a board member who no longer is with us, that, over the years, constantly wanted to eliminate lines if we weren't using them. And the reason for having nothing in a line was after a certain amount of years, then that line would go away. If those, so we need, when we budget, to look at those lines and see if that's how we still feel. And if not, it's so simple to just put a damn dollar in there. And that really resolves the issue, you know? But, so I don't think there was any money in the curriculum director function. And I'm still unclear what that exactly means. So we certainly violated that whole concept there. And then when you get into furniture, and, and we, we bought furniture, and, and we could have put it in the replacement furniture line, and I, it just flummoxes me why we did not, instead of putting it in a zero line. So those are things, as we get into the budget, that I'll spend more time and look at, but I think we all need to look at some of that. So we just need an answer.
It sounded like we had one.
At this point, I'm not sure who else you want me to ask. We have asked the DRA, we have asked the School Board Association attorney, we have asked our, our own attorney.
So you have a letter from the DRA?
Uh, we did that last year.
No, I think you did that last year in Nottingham.
We can get you a letter from the DRA if that's what the board would like.
Well, I personally would, you know, before we go into the budget season, I, I would like a definitive answer from the DRA so that we do it correctly.
I mean, having...
That we don't have this argument. Some of these arguments just tend to go on and on and on for years. I, I would just like to have a definitive answer so that we know.
And having said all this, I mean, I think it is clean and good practice to have an open line identified in your budget for what you're going to be spending it out of. I mean, it's just more transparent, though.
Transparency.
Any other subcommittee reports, meetings anyone would like to report on?
All right. Before you go any further, can we back up to two things, please? I'll be brief, quick.
What's that?
I would like to know if in the Fresh Picks, questions will be directed in writing to Lisbon Linda Osborne at L-O-S-B-U-R-N-N. Does she have two N's in her website email address? It looks odd. I, she would be the only one to have that extra letter in there.
Where are you seeing this?
On page 48, second column down, second paragraph down.
Of the contact?
The Fresh Picks. Page 49 of our packet.
Oh, right.
Just before it goes out, is that Fresh Picks? No, maybe it's the strategic planning. I'm sorry. Page 49.
Okay.
It's the strategic planning. Now, just before it goes out, is that the correct email address, or is it one N in her name?
Oh, it should be one N.
And the second thing, I read it, and I had to reread it five times to really understood what it said. We need, and this is to the principals' update for the board, we need to think about transitioning the world language position to something else for next year if we are not able to find any candidate. That, that really sounds rather ominous, considering the wonderful job, as I understand. Is, is this Mrs. Russell's job?
Mm-hmm.
I mean...
Do you know how hard it is to find a world language teacher, though? Like, Co-Brown has one open.
I don't care if we have to go to Mexico.
Co-Brown's still looking for one, too.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough.
Well, that was it.
I think it's great that you're looking ahead to, to plan for that. In, I certainly hope that we do fill the position, but I think it's great that you're looking ahead and trying to think outside the box also.
All right, so, Tim, I started, got us started on the strategic, strategic planning RFP. Is there any other comments anyone else make on this? I assume we just approve this, and then you'll post it?
Yeah, I just wanted you to take a look at it. If it, if it meets the needs that, that you have in mind, then we will, we'll send the RFP out and start the process.
Any comments on this? Additional comments on this? Okay, all right, let's do it, then?
Great, thank you.
Okay, it's July, our parking lot items. Anybody have, want, have anything they want to bring up with the...
Was that in the parking lot? Where am I?
We have a NSBA update that's supposed to happen.
Oh, that's not the one I was looking at, sorry.
Well, we have parking lot, and then we have school board timeline, right?
The timeline's what I was going to talk about.
We can do it together. So if you have any, anything on, from either of those.
I was just wondering about, maybe I was on the wrong one.
The NSBA update, is that something you would like me to put on the next agenda or two and invite them to?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Oh, yeah, it is July, okay.
That what you'd like?
Yeah, please.
Actually, we could combine that with, if Mike could make it at least, at least times, he could maybe give us an update on athletics as well. Maybe combined. Well, it's not an NSBA anymore, is it?
He's still the baseball commissioner, I thought.
Okay, so maybe he'd be a good first.
But then Doug sweets to president, Ed is the vice president. So we could probably get one of them, or...
Yeah, I'll, I'll find out. Okay, thank you.
I was just wondering, and this may be too early, so maybe the next time, but if we're sticking with the block scheduling that we trialed last year, if there's been a discussion with that, or if we're changing around the scheduling, if any thought has been, you know, if there had been any, you know, feedback from the teachers, if that worked well, if it didn't work well, anything like that, because that was on the, the discussion. So I don't know if we want to put that off until August.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, you know, after four days, that might be a little bit much to ask.
Well, and I didn't know...
We have talked about the schedule. Can I speak about it in depth at this point?
No.
Well, and I didn't know if there had been any, like, teacher feedback to the, you know, previous administration issue was leaving or anything.
I think what I would recommend is, is that we can just keep that on the radar for principals' report.
Yep.
As we move into August as an update on scheduling.
Okay, and then the, the handbook, I just don't want the same thing that happened last year to happen again.
We've talked about that.
Okay.
So handbook will be coming along shortly, I imagine. Next meeting, meeting after?
I would say August is a safer bet.
Fair enough.
And if you need proofreaders, we can, you know, certainly send it out to us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, future meetings, our, our next meeting is two weeks.
Do we know what the superintendent? I have two questions for Dr. Gudowski.
We are, but I think you can ask your questions.
There was some kind of a problem with not depositing $63,854.44 for the IRS payment on the big teacher-ending payroll.
Yep.
Is that being resolved? How is that? We're, we're in the process of looking into that. There was a, it was a mistake in, in depositing that in, and there was a penalty attached to that, and we're in the process of seeing if we can get the penalty waived. How much would the penalty be? Uh, last I heard, it was 5%. We approved a, thank you, we approved a check in the amount of $340.06 from Follett Books or something like that, where we sold books, and that should have gone into unanticipated revenue last year. It's still not made it to the bank or to our treasurer. Do you know anything about that?
Nope, but I can look into it.
I know they found it in a desk finally, but... $340. $340.06.
That was approved last, that was last meeting.
Last meeting approved, yeah. Yes, and it should have gone to the treasurer and been, been used as unanticipated. It's, our books sold, belongs to the town. Could you let us know what's going on with that? I will. Thank you.
Treasurer's here tonight. Would, would you be interested in doing like a treasurer's report for the board, like, as a regular basis or anything like that, or, or have your, your time on the agenda to, to bring up issues?
We'll do that.
You'll do that, right? Okay. All right, I just wanted to check with you. All right, thanks. Future meetings, our next meeting is July 21st, our next regular board meeting at 6:30. And then two meetings in August, also the Budget Committee meeting on the 20th, what time?
7:00.
7:00, Budget Committee meeting, on Thursday, the 20th. And our next joint board meeting is August 22nd, 16, again. Is there any closing public summit?
Just very briefly, since you were talking about the dollar versus no dollar on the lines, I have the copy of the last draft financial statement that was printed on May 23rd, and I went through, there are seven lines. And I went through, there are seven lines in the entire budget that have zero. And four of them ended up having money put on them when there was no money there, you know, nothing yet. There were three lines that already had a dollar in them. As Dr. Gudowski said, I mean, you're talking about adding seven dollars to the overall budget if you put a dollar in each of those seven lines. It just makes it so much cleaner. This is, whether it's required or not required, it makes reviewing the budget and understanding why you're spending money, for what purpose, so much cleaner, so much easier, as opposed to, well, we don't have money for new furniture, but we could've put it on the used furniture line, which is true. But don't you think the taxpayers, certainly the budget committee, would prefer to know how much money you needed to spend on new furniture instead of it being not hidden, but included in with a semi-related line? I urge you guys, please, just put the extra buck in the lines. If you go three, four, or five years without spending anything on that line, that tells you just as much as having a zero on the line and not spending anything. But it makes it so much cleaner for everybody if there's a dollar, so you have something, you've got an open line that you can apply it to. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Any closing comment by board members? Good, all right, and now.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wow, almost a record.